On September thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, in the Town Hall. First item on the agenda is a board vote and signatures request for complete covenant release PB two thousand two dash forty Duluth State subdivision, two thousand sixteen dash fourteen MOD John Hour. Charlene?
Yes, this is covenant release, the covenant is placed on a subdivision to ensure that the subdivision is built to the standard as required. The Duluth subdivision dates back to two thousand and two, it was subsequently sold to John and Barbara Hour. The road has been completed. We've received the as-built plan, so the applicant, application as presented has been developed in accordance with the approved subdivision plan, specifically the road profile has been constructed in substantial conformance with the provisions of this decision as demonstrated through written documentation from engineering, water department, and administrative reviews. So at this time, the request of the applicant is to approve the request for the full release of covenant.
Move to grant the applicant's request for a full release of the planning board agreement and covenant book one five seven two six, page one thirty-nine. Substantial conformance of the planning board's decision for cases PB two thousand two dash forty and PB two thousand sixteen dash fourteen has been demonstrated.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Do you want, how do you want to sign? Do you want to sign at the end? Do you want to sign as we go through it?
I'd like to sign right here, then at the end it's all done.
Okay.
If that's okay.
So here, there are two copies of the covenant.
Okay, two copies.
Two clean copies, so if you would sign, Mary, unfortunately you don't get to sign.
Not a problem.
Your heart's broken, right?
That's what happens when you're an alternate, right?
Yes.
I feel like I'm so far away.
Well, now I can, I can wait a moment or two. Don't have to make that eighty-eight mile drive.
Excuse me.
I also do have a correspondence file, which, if anyone's interested, there wasn't anything overly exciting in it to share with you, so.
I'll leave everything, I'll come.
I'll leave everything here.
I want to keep them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the second item on the agenda is the request for complete covenant release, PB two thousand nine dash twenty-one, not in subdivision, two thousand sixteen dash seventeen MOD and acceptance of as-built plan. Caroline?
Yes. You're going too fast for me. Okay, this is actually a two-parter. As you may recall, the board approved this back on July twenty-sixth. It was a modification of an original subdivision plan that had been approved previously in two thousand and nine. Driveway had been constructed over the road. You requested an as-built plan. That has been submitted in accordance with your, what the board requested at that time. So this is a twofold situation. One is first to accept the as-built plan.
Move to accept the as-built plan for the not-in-modified subdivision filed planning board two thousand sixteen dash seventeen.
Second that as well?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing notice, touch, no in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
And the second request is for, again, a full release of covenant. As the board waived the, the construction of the subdivision road, they allowed for the driveway that was there to take its place. This lot now seeks to be released from covenant and has been requested by the applicant.
Move to grant the applicant's request for a full release of the planning board agreement and covenant, and covenant book two four three oh three, page eighty-two at the Marshall County Registry of Deeds. Substantial conformance of the planning board's decision for cases PB two zero nine dash twenty-one and PB two zero one six dash seventeen haven't been demonstrated.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded.
Point of discussion, if I may, Mr. Chairman, because the, the motion maker just added the few words to the thing that was written here that you cut that, Charlie.
I did not, I'm sorry. What did you add, sir?
He added, he added at the Marshall County Registry of Deeds after page eighty-two.
Oh.
Just wanted to make sure you were listening.
No, I just.
I was not. Obviously.
Okay, any further discussion? Noticed hearing no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
And I have.
Ship 'em down.
I have two copies of that for you to sign, please. Excuse me.
Looks cute.
It's golden here.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, on the agenda is a request for complete covenant release PB nineteen ninety-two, number AA ninety-two oh one. Ole Cola special use permit accessory apartment PB two thousand fifteen dash twenty-eight and a modification of a use special permit. Charlene?
This is actually an odd one. This was originally before the board as a special permit back in.
Nineteen ninety-two?
Nineteen ninety-two, yes, thank you. It was then modified in two thousand and fifteen. What was missed at the time, there was a covenant restriction placed on the property. Originally, you needed sixty thousand square feet to have a home with a, an apartment. The zoning changed, that it only required forty thousand square feet. So two lots within the subdivision had been essentially merged for zoning purposes. There were restrictions on either lot so that they could have the required sixty thousand square feet. Once the zoning changed, that it only needed forty thousand square feet, the modification that was done in two thousand and fifteen made it clear that the lots no longer had to be held together. But there was a covenant in place that was missed at the time, so they, they are now seeking the release of covenant so that the lot can be sold off.
So, may I ask a question? Ask a question, Mr. Chairman? So, it's one lot, but there are three.
There are actually two separate lots.
Two thousand lots.
Two forty thou, two forty thousand square foot lots. So at the time that the apartment was requested, you needed sixty thousand square feet. So they put a restriction on the vacant forty thousand square foot lot saying you can't build on it because you're using that lot area for your main home and your accessory apartment.
Got it.
Then the zoning changed so that you only needed forty thousand square feet per lot for an accessory apartment. So they came back in two thousand and fifteen, changed the special permit, but this covenant was hanging out there that nobody thought of, found until Mary Beth Cuddy, the attorney for the, the prospective buyer.
Oh.
Found it in her, her title research.
Yeah, and this is all kosher?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Okay, alright.
When I, because this came in last week when I was on vacation, when I came in yesterday, I'm like, well, this is a different one. I've not seen something like this in a very long time. But it also went back to nineteen ninety-two, and that's probably when I would have seen something like this.
Yeah.
I move to grant the applicant Edwin R. and Janet L. O. Colas' request for a full re- release of covenant. Covenant instrument number five six seven two six, Plan Book four oh one, page sixty, Lot One, and Plan Book four three zero, page twenty-two, Lot Three, and Plan Book seven seven six five, pages two forty-four. The, there being substantial conformance of the planning board's decision in this matter.
Okay, second that one.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then, carried?
And I have two of those for you to sign, please.
Okay.
Do you have, while we're doing this, do you have a copy of the ZBA agenda for this next meeting?
I do not unless it was in the packet, because we, their next meeting is actually the day after your next meeting, so you will have the opportunity to review it the night before.
I saw it, but I can't.
Actually, it might have been the ZBA from Dennis, what just went around.
I saw, I saw the Howard one, but I can't remember. Maybe I saw it in my computer. But, as I recall, there were some things on there, Mr. Chairman, that we might want to take a position on.
And you will have the opportunity at your meeting, at your next meeting.
Which is?
The twenty-seventh.
Okay. Do we have some matters on, of substance on that day?
You have the Dino's property.
Dino.
The plaza.
Howard.
Howard Port.
Howard Port.
Oh, oh, that's going to come in?
Yeah.
That's going to be a long show.
You'll get to vote on that.
I can vote on that.
You can, it's a special permit.
Yay.
Endorsement of a definitive subdivision plan.
Yep.
P B two thousand sixteen dash fifteen, Borden DEF, following expiration of the twenty-day appeal period. Charlene?
And, once again, on this one, you don't have a report on this, so this will be verbal. The board approved this back on the twenty-sixth of July. The twenty-day appeal, appeal period has expired, no appeals were taken, so at this time, they are seeking endorsement of the definitive plan, so that they can record it. There is no covenant because it was a panhandle lot, and you don't require a covenant for a panhandle lot.
So?
Move to endorse the definitive subdivision plan PB two thousand sixteen dash fifteen, Borden DEF, the twenty-day appeal period having expired.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in fa, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried?
Okay, on this, you have the Mylar to sign with the special pen. So as you pass it down, make sure you send down the special pen.
This is with the quill pen, right?
Yeah. Actually, it might make it easier rather than rolling it all out, because it's right there. And I'll put the date in if you'd want. And then we have a number of paper copies that we would like you to sign.
They don't necessarily have to be involved.
No, no, this is for our records only. So you got a small one, and then two of the larger ones.
This is probably a silly question, Charlene, but are we doing these electronically now?
We do require a disk of the subdivision. However, we still need to sign the Mylar so that they can record it. But we do get them electronically, so when we change the assessor's maps, the information is easily plugged in.
Shut it in.
Right.
I bet you that electronically, we may not be able to read them fifty years from now.
Well, it's the only legal document, you. It's a legal document.
Okay, moving right along, okay.
Teeny.
Okay. New business, any new business on the agenda?
Minutes.
Make a motion to adopt the minutes of Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, as printed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carried?
Okay, on this, you have the Mylar to sign with the special pen. So as you pass it down, make sure you send down the special pen.
This is with the quill pen, right?
Yeah. Actually, it might make it easier rather than rolling it all out, because it's right there. And I'll put the date in if you'd want. And then we have a number of paper copies that we would like you to sign.
They don't necessarily have to be involved.
No, no, this is for our records only. So you got a small one, and then two of the larger ones.
This is probably a silly question, Charlene, but are we doing these electronically now?
We do require a disk of the subdivision. However, we still need to sign the Mylar so that they can record it. But we do get them electronically, so when we change the assessor's maps, the information is easily plugged in.
Shut it in.
Right.
I bet you that electronically, we may not be able to read them fifty years from now.
Well, it's the only legal document, you. It's a legal document.
Okay, moving right along, okay. Right down the bottom.
Teeny.
Okay. New business, any new business on the agenda?
Minutes.
Make a motion to adopt the minutes of Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen, as printed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. Okay, briefings and reports.
Well, I went before the Board of Selectmen to update the status of the wastewater program because with the approval of the CWMP, we were asked what, what do you want to do next?
Chair, can you use the microphone?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I repeated, yeah, so I, no, I'm sorry, I was addressing the board here. So I made a presentation to the Board of Selectmen last Monday about the status of the wastewater management program. That program has been approved by both the state and the Cape Cod Commission. So there's a thirty-day review period which ends at the end of this month. So once that is in place, the die is cast, and we need to move forward. So, and then with respect to, to me, I started as a representative from this board on the original wastewater program, so that's why I'm reporting it under briefings. So the question then became, what is the wastewater implementation committee going to do next? There's now transitions from plan into an execution that requires authority to spend funds, allocate personnel, et cetera, et cetera. So that is now before the Board of Selectmen, and they have to come to grips with that. We made some suggestions, we'll probably work with them on how to do the details.
Do we have any sense, Peter, as to what's going on in the discussions with Chatham about our tapping into that system and coming down that road?
We have a sense, but we don't have a final sense. It's still being negotiated, and I think the, it's all of the details, and this is where we are, sort of, not yet, haven't come to grips with it. That's my understanding. My, I'm being told time and again that it, it is moving forward.
They, they are still in negotiations. The negoti, Selectmen's negotiating team meets periodically, those are open to anyone who would like to attend. I'm not sure when their next meeting is with Chatham, but the goal is to bring it forward at the, the May town meeting next year, if everything, if all the stars align.
No, I, I just question it because I have heard some grumblings that Chatham wants more than we want to pay.
Well, it says, you have two sides, one goes one extreme, the other one goes to the other extremes, and hopefully.
Why they call it negotiation.
We also have, and this is a totally different aspect of the program, but we are thinking forward, we're also in discussions, and this is public knowledge, with Dennis and Yarmus for the future, where, for that, this side, the western side of, of Harwich, to then hopefully potentially put in place, one single plant. That's a discussion, that's the thinking.
For, for all the communities?
Yeah, for those three towns. So those are merely preliminary discussions, but it's nice to have those discussions so that, you know, we're looking many, many years ahead. Yep. That's the end of my briefing.
I'm this board's rep on the Capitol Outlay, and we begin our annual sojourn beginning in September, I have the date at the House.
Twenty-first.
Thank you.
So I'll be taking the minutes.
And, one of the issues, I'm also on the East Howard Fire Station Subcommittee. And one of the things that we did on that committee a week or so ago was we went down and toured the new Chatham Fire Station, and I don't know how this will all go in terms of how much, but having seen what they did in Chatham, I, I'd be a big proponent, and I just want you to know, because I'm representing the board, I'd be, I'd be a proponent of tearing the thing down in East Howard, but we're gonna do one, but we'll see. And I don't know how that'll all go. Money, you know, financially is the issue, obviously. I mean, it's gonna be some bonds, but.
Yeah, and I, I looked at those things as well, and I, this is a, an opinion on my part, I, I look at buildings that used to be public buildings that were made, made out of stone, and they lasted fifty or a hundred years. I look at the, some of the municipal buildings, and federal buildings too, left to be unnamed, that are falling apart, made out of plywood, clapboard, and whatever, it's, it is a shame that we, we can't find the funds, quote unquote, to do it right.
Well, I, I, with Howard, I'm sorry, with, with Chatham, very plain, I mean, no, no, it's not, it's not a Taj Mahal or anything, but it's obviously, you know, well put together, and we went all through it, and, and it looks to me, and, and I, I've had some discussions with the fire chief, it looks to me that, you know, if, that we might at some time in the future have to again add on to East Howard, because the development in this town is on that side of town, as we all know, both commercially and, and residentially.
It's reflected in the zoning bylaw.
Yes, that's true, too. And, so, I mean, we'll see what happens. They'll probably take my head off at, at the Capitol Outlay, but I'm gonna tell my story, and we'll see what happens.
Out of curiosity, Joe, you mentioned expanding the East Howard, you know, potentially. Is there enough land to do there? I mean, that's kind of a small little plot.
They said it goes back a pretty good distance.
Yeah?
I didn't realize that, and I asked the same question, but I was told it goes back a pretty good distance. And of course, they own all around the flagpole and everything, so they could go.
They can count that as footage.
Go that way.
Well, they could build in that direction, and then use some of that land for parking and drive-through, and that's one of the first things we talked about was where, which way it would open.
Yep.
You know what I'm saying? Whether it would stay the, the way it is, or whether they would open on the thirty-nine. I, I would say it's probably gonna stay the way it is.
I think, yeah, I'm the staff liaison person, and probably, the, the way it's situated will probably be the way it remains.
So we'll see what happens. I, I, as I say, I just, having seen the, the Chatham thing, not that anybody has any desire to go around and look at fire stations, but.
They're always happy to show it, though. I went over and got a tour of it.
If, if you're in that area, well worth seeing it. I'm, I'm really glad we, we, we went down and went through the whole thing.
The Chatham Fire Hall.
Pardon?
The Chatham one.
Yes.
Yep, on Depot, behind the ball field.
One of the, a lot of interesting little things, but you know how fire station doors all go up? Well, these doors open this way. They're, they're on, and I, you really have to touch them, and they, and they.
Oh, they swing out.
Then they swing out.
Just any reason for that?
Oh, they had a reason, but I forget.
Oh, I know.
There was a reason.
Too many times, pulling out or backing in or whatever. They don't wait for the door to go all the way up, and they hit it.
What if they don't open? Have they go away before it's fully open?
Well, this, it's, it's, I mean, you see it, it's right in front of you, but once, I mean, I don't know if you have an electric garage door opener, but it gets to a certain point, and you can't see it anymore, and you think, am I, you know?
Yeah, I'm okay, bang.
Exactly.
It's like driving on Starro Drive.
Anyway, it was, it, we'll see how it all goes, and, and of course, it's all about money, obviously, you know, but.
Does that, East Howard Fire Station, does it have sleeping accommodations above?
It does now, in their, in their violation of.
Joe, you keep moving away from the microphone.
Sorry. It, it does now, but they're probably in violation of about nineteen laws, because we got women and men sleeping almost side by side in, as, as it is in East Howard now. Whereas, if they were to do a new one, they'd, they'd segregate it and.
Is that really a vi, is there a law that violates that?
There are segregation issues and.
Yeah.
But, but are there laws?
I don't know.
I don't think, so you're saying it's a law, but I don't think it's a law.
Probably a regulation. There may not be a post.
Yeah, it might be regulations, but.
Could be a contract issue, too.
Sure, I, I'm sure it probably is.
And building code.
But I'm just questioning the laws.
Mr. Chairman, while we've got a few, a minute here, what's going on with the sand pile?
With the what?
The sand pile down at the corner of.
Oh, we, why don't we bring?
Larry, you gotta use your mic, too.
It's not on the agenda, so we can't bring it up. It might be, it's too problematic to bring it up right now when it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
It would be a violation of the open meeting law, so, we'll get it on, we'll get it on the agenda and talk.
Okay, please, sure.
Or do a memo.
Every time I drive by it, I, you know.
Okay.
The housing, I, I volunteered to be on the remake of the housing production plan. We've had two meetings, and so we are moving along with that, and hope to have a.
You're the planning board rep on there?
Yep. So, we expect to have that done by the end of the year.
And what is it gonna produce?
Housing production plan.
And what does it do?
What it does is sets out the guidelines or the action steps to increase affordable housing.
Oh.
And it will be coming before this board, because it needs your sign-off and, and okay of the plan, and it also needs a selectman. So we're thinking, I'm also on that working group, so we're thinking we might do a joint meeting, and at some point also do a public hearing on it to get input.
And then there's a, there's another, there's another quasi-committee that still is in effect for the middle school.
Right.
We haven't met on a while.
Yeah.
We haven't met in a while on that, but.
Yep.
I did get in contact with, with Michael, and I'm waiting to hear back from him, and hopefully we'll, we'll move that forward a little bit.
Sure, sure, would be good.
I have one other question that, that I think falls within the jurisdictionary, preview of what we discussed, and that's the, the Route Six construction. I received a letter some time ago, I believe, that construction was gonna take place.
What's going on now?
I see people surveying.
I drove through the other.
How does this impact us as a planning board, anything at all?
Doesn't.
State highway.
State highway. I just got an notice that.
They're gonna, they're gonna extend the entry, as I understand it.
Well, they're hoping to, they may not, but they are.
Run in and run out lanes, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, one other thing is, just a very quick agenda item today, they opened the architectural bids for the Sacquetucket Harbor build-out. I haven't seen them yet, but, but John was quite happy about that, so we'll have a full report the next time.
You're on that committee?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I can tell you unofficially on the Historic Commission that they did vote to seek CPC funds to do a, an application for the National Historic Register down in West Howard for, for the.
Captain's Row.
The Captain's Row buildings. Yes.
They did?
So they voted to, to, to seek CPC funds, so unofficially.
How will that affect habitat?
I don't, I don't believe it would, but I don't know.
Because their land is behind there, isn't it?
It's all, it's all the, it's just the row houses, the individual houses.
Right, and it's just a district, it's not like the Harwich Historic Overlay District, which was set up by the town and set regulations in place. This would be a historic district, which the only, because I was asked a couple questions about it, and really, the only time that it could, anyone could be affected is if there's
Oh, they want to make, make it a park, I believe, is that-
How is the town of Howard doing that? Because I thought the real estate, I thought the acquisition of property had to follow the, a certain path, and I thought the real estate and open space people didn't vote to move that forward, so how was it moving forward?
There was an executive session.
I know there was.
I was not at it, even if I was-
Can't say anything.
I can't say anything, so you can speculate until the cows come home.
I only, I only read it in the paper, that's-
Yeah.
So we'll see what happens there.
HTC was also at the meeting, so.
Pretty good shape, I think, that, that lot, that they-
It is.
They sealed whatever mess was there.
They actually have a certificate, from what I understand, that it's relatively clean. It's clean enough to build on. However, anything else?
Yeah, I do, actually. With respect to signage, we, we did assign law, put a bylaw in place. A couple of thousands, it piqued my interest, one of them, I see these vertical feathers now, and I'm not trying to pick out any particular business.
Oh, in front of businesses?
Yeah, about ten feet tall, you know, waving in the wind, is that, I don't know, I don't know, how many am I going to see? I was wondering, is that something we missed or should look at? Just a question, open question.
Well, when we did the bylaw, if you recall, the big question was who's going to enforce it?
Yeah.
I mean, they, they said the building inspector, and he, by that time, he had eighty, eighty hours of work for a forty-hour week already. And now he's just moved on, hasn't he?
Yes.
Also, I think, since we're talking about the Route Six exit, do I, is it my imagination, or do I begin to see more and more and more and more signs as I come off the ramp onto one twenty-four?
It's election season.
Yeah, that was more than election season.
Well, you have to remember certain philanthropic or institutional or nonprofits, they're exempt. So you oftentimes will see, you know, the Masons, and when they meet and where they meet, or the Kiwanis Club, or different churches, where they meet, that kind of thing, and those are all exempt.
I just want to make sure this is-
We've been through this numerous times through the years.
Another question, because it is election season, and I drove by, drove by the, the middle school, and I like to look when I drive by it, but there's a couple of signs stuck on the lawn, and, and there's the ones for sheriff. I mean, quite frankly, you can't use the town-
Actually, I, I'm not debating that, but if, if you have a copy of last week's Chronicle, read the editorial.
Oh.
And it said what?
And it basically said that there was a case, the US District Court in Massachusetts, I forget the, the name of the case, that said that you can have political signs on a, on a public right-of-way-
On public property.
And public property because it is a public forum. It is a place for public forum. Because the Chatham of, a current Chatham selectman was told a couple of years ago, when he was running the first time, you know, move, you've got to get your signs out of there, and he said no, and he cited this particular law, and they acquiesced and said, yep, you're right.
Okay.
But they were beating up on a particular person.
The other interesting thing is that we see, and I suppose anybody that, that's run for office in the town of Howard has gone up and campaigned at the dump.
I was just going to say, does that mean we can now campaign at the dump again?
No, 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 that, that's municipal property, that's a violation of the Federal Hatch Act.
Yeah, that I cannot comment on, I don't know.
But it's public property, and it's a public forum.
But you can't, you cannot, you cannot do any political activity in a municipal building.
Charlene, do you have any-
It's not a, it's not a building.
Oh, there's a building right there? There's plenty of buildings on the site.
There are always politicians at my transfer station.
Do you have any report on, on the, for our getting a new director?
Oh, yes, indeed. The committee met two weeks ago?
On, yes.
And interviewed four people, we got twenty applications, we interviewed four people. We are actually doing second interviews on Friday.
And, and is that the administrator's appointment, or does it go with the board?
It's the administrator's appointment, the Board of Selectmen has right of refusal of that appointment.
I got you, okay.
But it is the town administrator's appointment.
And you sit on that committee?
Yes. So does Larry.
Good.
All right.
I was going, that was going to be my next question, I thought we had somebody there, I didn't know.
We do.
Yes.
Great. Motion adjourned.
Seconded?
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Thank you very much.